Okay, good evening and welcome to our August sixteenth Village Board of Trustees meeting. If I could ask everyone to stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, once again, first order of business is a public hearing, I need a motion open to public hearing regarding chapter forty-three modifications of vehicle and traffic to prohibit vehicle parking and standing on stage road from Seventeen M to Still Road. Need a motion open?
Barringer will make the motion.
Second?
Ferraro, second.
Call the question?
Barranger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Aye, so carry, thank you. Anyone from the public here regarding the prohibition of parking on stage road? Opportunity to speak now would be great. Okay, regarding the public hearing modifying chapter forty-three, vehicle and traffic to prohibit the vehicle parking and standing along stage road. Anyone here from the public wish to speak? Okay, I don't think there's anyone here for that purpose.
So you can make a motion first.
I need to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Barranger, make the motion?
Ferraro, second.
Call the question?
Barranger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Aye, so carry, thank you. Next order of business is to acknowledge John Kerwin, longtime resident volunteer firefighter for almost fifty years. His wife Nancy was a longtime employee here in the village and he just recently passed away. I'd like to offer for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, first order of business, we have some proclamations acknowledging some of our long-term businesses and the persons behind him. And the first one we have is Jimmy Bakayaki, if you'd come upstairs.
Just get a seat right there and just stand there. Okay, so the Village of Monroe would like to offer the proclamation honoring you from Monroe. Whereas Jimmy is a beloved and valued member of our community, whose professionalism and craftsmanship have served thousands of clients over fifty years. And whereas, in addition to being a place of business, it became a welcoming gathering place. And whereas, as a unique craftsman who took on any challenge, has devoted a lifetime of service to Monroe. And whereas, a member of our community, has donated countless hours to our many youth sport programs, using his time and skills to repair and maintain equipment. And whereas, Monroe is truly losing a skilled craftsman, whose skills cannot be replaced. Now therefore, be proclaimed Village Board Trustees on behalf of our residents and community. Wish to acknowledge Jimmy Bakayaki for his service to Village of Monroe and offer our deepest appreciation for his contribution. And witness, I, Neilus Dwyer, Mayor of Village of Monroe, and guarantee to send my hand and cause the effects, seal and signature of the Village of Monroe on the sixteenth day of August two thousand twenty-two. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, everybody. And yeah. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Who's he, Jake?
I'll talk to you.
Now, we have a second proclamation here this evening for Sam Amandola. Sam is a local pizzeria guy for many years, including up through nineteen eighty-three through today, with fifteen and five. And the village thought it was very important that we acknowledge him as well. So for the camera, I'm going to read this, Sam's already retired in North Carolina, so I'll just read this to you, Sam. Whereas, America's entrepreneurial spirit is historically driven by pioneers who think big, take risks, and work hard. And whereas, small businesses are the backbone of our community, affectionately known as the mom and pop businesses. And whereas, when we support small business, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture. And whereas, Sam Amandola, founder of Amandola's Pizzeria Restaurant, has worked and lived in the village since nineteen eighty-three. And whereas, Sam Amandola and his family have made the final prize and will enjoy a well-earned retirement. Now therefore, be proclaimed the Village Board of Trustees on behalf of our residents and community. Wish to acknowledge and recognize Sam Amandola's for his many contributions and wish him and his family the very best in his retirement. And witness, I, Neilus Dwyer, Mayor of Village of Monroe, guarantee to send my hand and cause the effects, the seal and signature of the Village of Monroe on the sixteenth day of August two thousand twenty-two. This is you, Sam, Lynn, come this. I don't know, Anthony or Laura coming?
I said it was.
Okay, so let's just keep moving along.
Okay, first order of business is department reports. I need a motion to accept the department reports as submitted by the department heads.
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Any questions? Call the question?
Barranger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Aye, so carry. Next order of business is the approval of the meeting minutes for the July nineteenth submitted by the clerk. I need a motion to accept them as submitted.
Barranger will make the motion?
Ferraro, second.
Any discussion? Call the question?
Barranger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Thank you. Next order of business is budget transfers and modifications. I need a motion to accept the treasurer's report and budget transfers and modifications as submitted.
Barranger will make the motion?
Ferraro, second.
Any discussion? Call the question?
Barranger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Aye, so carry, thank you. Next order of business is the resignation of part-time dispatcher M. Gans.
Okay.
Trustee Barranger.
Be it resolved, the board accepted the resignation of Matthew Gans, part-time dispatcher with the Monroe Police Department, effective July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. Both the Board of Trustees and the Monroe Police Department wish Mr. Gans well in his future endeavors. And I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Barranger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Aye, so carry, thank you. Next order of business is full-time working leader, we're going to table that for now. Next order of business, resignation PD SRO Doug Kraus, trustee Barranger.
Be it resolved, the board accepts the resignation of school resource officer Douglas Kraus with the Monroe Police Department, effective August tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Both the Board of Trustees and the Monroe Police Department wish Doug well in his future endeavors. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question?
Barranger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
I know, I know, it's awesome.
Okay, next order of business, the authorization, equipment replacement for the Crown Castle cell tower. The building department received a permit application by Jerry Feathers from Crown Castle for equipment replacement on existing cell tower located on Bald Hill. As part of the building department requirements, the property owner must consent to the work before the work can begin. And consent is given by the property owner signing off on the permit application. Since Bald Hill is owned by the Village of Monroe, the Village Board must consent to the work and authorize the mayor to sign the permit application. Therefore, resolve, the Board of Trustees consents to the equipment replacement needed to an existing cell tower at Crown Castle located on Bald Hill and authorize Mayor Dwyer to sign off on the building department permit application. I need a motion to authorize the mayor to sign.
O'Connor will make the motion?
Second?
Barranger will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Barranger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Aye, so carry, thank you. Next order of business, the adoption of a resolution and modification of chapter forty-three of the Village Code Vehicle and Traffic. Correct, counselor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Whereas, after consultation with the chief of police, the Village of Monroe Police Department, the Board of Trustees determined that vehicles parked or standing along stage road between intersections of Seventeen M and Still Road limit safe sight distance and therefore pose a threat to the health and welfare of the village residents and visitors. And whereas, New York State law four dash four twelve confers authority on the Board of Trustees to manage village property, including specific authorization to take all actions not inconsistent with general law and the provisions of the New York State Constitution to protect the safety, health, comfort, and general welfare of village inhabitants. And whereas, section forty-three dash nine A of the Village Code authorizes the Board of Trustees by duly enacted resolution to prohibit parking on village streets. And whereas, a duly noticed public hearing was held on August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at which members, at which hearing, members of the public were afforded the opportunity to comment on the proposed resolution to prohibit parking along stage road as set forth herein. And whereas, after hearing from all those wishing to comment on said proposed resolution, the public hearing was closed on August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Whereas, because of the prohibition of parking on village streets is not an action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, known as SECRE, it is not subject to environmental review. Now therefore, be resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe hereby prohibits the parking and standing of any and all vehicles along the length of stage road, including on the roadway, in the shoulder, and within the right-of-way from the intersection of Seventeen M to the intersection of Still Road. And said prohibition shall be added to no parking and no standing list maintained by the village clerk and shall be enforced by the Village of Monroe Police Department. Be it further resolved, that all actions and funds necessary to effectuate the intent of the resolution, such as posting signs and erecting guardrails, shall be undertaken upon further consultation among the police chief, the village department of public works, and the mayor. I need a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted, as written.
Barranger, make the motion?
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Barranger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Aye, so carry. Next order of business, mileage reimbursement allowance increase. Resolve, the Board of Trustees approves the federal mileage reimbursement to such offices and employees of the village who use their personal automobiles while performing their official duties on behalf of the village. That has increased from point five eight five to point six two five per mile effective July one. I need a motion as submitted.
O'Connor will make the motion?
Barranger will second.
Any discussion? Call the question?
Barranger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Aye, so carry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry for the interruption. The next item on the agenda, I would ask the board to table this. This was a little bit of a miscommunication. The amendment to chapter two hundred, it should be tabled because we are in the middle of a moratorium. And that should be addressed by the comprehensive plan. As I mentioned to the board before, I, I think this local law is a bit unnecessary. But I did draft it at the pass of the board some time ago. So I would ask that this is tabled.
Okay. Local law number nine, modifying chapter forty-three, the Village Code Vehicles and Traffic to prohibit parking commercial motor vehicles in residential districts.
And this would become eight.
This would be eight.
This would be eight.
Okay. Be resolved that an introductory local law modifying chapter forty-three of the Village Code Vehicles and Traffic to prohibit parking commercial motor vehicles in residential districts is hereby introduced by Mayor Dwyer before the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York. And be it further resolved, that copies of the aforementioned proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the Board of Trustees. And be it further resolved, that the Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the Village Road Seven Stage Road, Monroe, New York, at seven ten PM on September sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
And what is the date on that?
September sixth, seven PM. Be it further resolved, that the village clerk shall publish or course to be published a public notice in the official newspaper of the Village of Monroe no later than ten days prior to there too. I need a motion to have the clerk publish this and to set the table for the proposed local law.
Barranger will make the motion?
Ferraro, second.
I would just ask the board to take a close look at the definition of commercial motor vehicles that I've included in this. It it fits somewhat to the weight requirements you already have, but just provide, provide you with any feedback that you have on that or any questions. Just put those in the form of an email to the clerk.
Okay, thank you. Okay, new business. First up is the moratorium hardship waiver request for the two oh eight Business Center LLC. Who there is with me, please? If you could just give the clerk your name?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Village Board. I'm Charles Gottlieb from Whitman, Osterman, and Hannah in Albany, New York, here on behalf of two oh eight Business Center LLC. Joined this evening with our project engineer Kirk Roth and I believe it's our project planning consultant. And John, I'm sorry if I don't pronounce your last name right, but Dolgren? All right. As well as, I believe, Mayor Gross is going to join us, who is the applicant. Here in furtherance of our July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two moratorium waiver request, the waiver would allow the planning board to proceed with review of the applicant's project, which is a commercial project on four oh one and four oh three Route two oh eight and twenty-three Gilbert Street. As you likely know, that project has been before the planning board now for the last three years and nine months. They would like to continue that review. They plan on continuing the SECRE review, but we would also like the waiver to allow the planning board to process the underlying site plan application and hopefully eventually approve the project. Kirk will run through the site plan and answer any questions you may have, but it's a commercial building only with a building footprint of forty-seven thousand five hundred square feet, commercial and retail uses. It's in the general business zoning districts, no area variances are needed, and prior to the moratorium, it complied with the zoning code. The property is currently improved with three structures, two existing single-family structures and one vacant used to be a single-family structure, but now is a bicycle repair shop that is no longer there. My written submission, as you know, is quite detailed, that goes into all of this. I will try to summarize it and then we can answer any questions. Section four of the moratorium allows an applicant to apply for a waiver from the moratorium, meaning the project would be exempt from the moratorium. If we can show the following, that the applicant cannot make any reasonable use of the property with any uses that are permitted, the moratorium causes irreparable injury, and it would be unreasonable and unjust to apply the moratorium. Related to that first factor, the property cannot be used while the moratorium is in place. That requires an analysis of two things. What are the uses that we could do on that property while the moratorium is in place? And then could the applicant essentially obtain a a reasonable return on his investment for the implementation of those uses? To assist in that analysis, we provided a letter from LGP Capital, who's the main applicant investor. That's exhibit B in the binder that was submitted. And that shows that the costs to date that have been spent by the applicant in the last three years and nine months is five million, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and ten cents, which is growing daily, you know, just by the presence of myself here, John, and Kirk. The applicant has committed to building the project and two million dollar traffic improvements for the village, which would bring the total project cost to nineteen million, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars. We also provided a letter from a real estate agent with an appraisal on what would the property be worth under certain scenarios of development that may be permitted while the moratorium is in place. That, that letter notes that the property with the project approvals would be worth seven point five million. The property without project approvals is worth one million. Fully constructed, the project is worth twenty-two million. And if we were to just renovate the two existing houses, and I'll get into this later, which is really the only thing we can currently use the property for, the property would only be worth seven hundred thousand. Then we then have to look at what can we do under the moratorium? So for that, I looked at section three of the moratorium, which lists all the things that are exempt from the moratorium. The first one is building permits for single-family homes. If you just want to simply get a building permit for a single-family home, you don't need planning board approval, you go to the code enforcement officer and get a permit. However, we're in the GB zoning district, which prohibits residential uses. So we would be able to rehabilitate the two existing single-family residences because they're pre-existing non-conforming uses. If we did that, the property would be worth seven hundred thousand dollars. However, the investments in the property have been well over five million, so there would be no return on investment. There wouldn't be the opportunity to renovate the vacant bike shop because that has now lost its pre-existing non-conforming uses. So if a new commercial use went in there, it would require site plan approval, which is barred by the moratorium. The second exemption in the moratorium is adaptive reuse of historical structures. There's no historical structures on the property that we could adaptively reuse. The third exemption is a lot line adjustment. We could seek a lot line adjustment, however, doing so would be kind of meaningless because we couldn't install new commercial uses there because of the moratorium. The fourth exemption is the addition and alteration or reconstruction of an existing structure. Again, that would only apply to those two single-family houses. The fifth exemption is preliminary, preliminarily approved subdivisions could continue. We have not gotten that far in the planning board process where we've received any approvals. We have just gotten into the part of the SECRE review where a draft environmental impact statement was drafted and submitted. So we have no preliminary approvals, no subdivision approval, no site plan, no special use permit approvals. The next standard of review is that the applicant would suffer irreparable injury if the moratorium were to stay in effect. That irreparable injury is certainly a financial one. As I just noted, there's about five point five million dollars that have been invested in purchasing the property, a village consultant fees, and applicant consultant fees. The next standard, which I think is really kind of the most compelling here, is that it would be unjust and unreasonable to apply the moratorium to this project. For that, I highlight two reasons. One is that we provided in our materials a list of what has occurred over the last three years and nine months where this project was before the planning board. There is a host of delays to no fault of the applicant. There is a host of violations of the SECRE timelines, additional trips to the zoning board of appeals that were not needed. And so without all of those delays, with timelines being blown, changing of planning board consultants, it is conceivable that the project would have been approved before the moratorium was even thought of. So applying the moratorium to the project now, when we just suffered a host of delays in front of the planning board, is unjust. The second reason is we've just submitted a draft environmental impact statement, which I'm sure you know, but it's a massive document that takes hours and hours and months and months to prepare at a substantial cost. And that document goes through every single potential environmental impact and assesses, are those environmental impacts significant? We submitted that to the planning board in April. We got comments back from the village's consultants. We're now addressing those comments and will resubmit the environmental impact statement. But what it does demonstrate is that the project will not result in any significant environmental impacts, specifically those that were the purpose of the moratorium. And that's outlined in my letter, and we also submitted a copy of the draft environmental impact statement, if you wanted some night reading. Just to go through a few of the delays that had occurred over the past three years and nine months. First, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRE, says that as soon as possible, when a municipality or governmental agency gets a project, it must classify what type of project that is, a type one, a type two, or an unlisted action. And then it should, as soon as possible, coordinate with all the other agencies. In this instance, despite the planning board engineer, well, let's back up. We submitted in November of two thousand and eighteen. In December of two thousand and eighteen, the then-village planning board consultant said, everything has been submitted, it's satisfactory to commence SECRE review. They can classify the project and coordinate to the related agencies. However, that coordination didn't occur until one entire year later. On August twelfth of two thousand twenty, the engineer, the village engineer advised the planning board that the planning board has enough information to declare itself the lead agency and to classify the project. However, the planning board disregarded this consultant's advice, which would have required a determination of significance, which is a positive declaration, within twenty days. So it was feasible, twenty days from August twelfth, that we would have had, twenty twenty, that we would have had the positive declaration that requires the draft environmental impact statement. But we didn't get that until February of two thousand twenty-one. So that is the type of delay that caused delay in preparation of the draft environmental impact statement and ultimately led the moratorium to apply to us. Instead, the planning board hired a new village consultant, who reviewed the application materials and found that this project should be better classified as a type one action instead of an unlisted action. And I'm not saying he or she is wrong, but what they then did was mandate that they recirculate to all the involved agencies. So we had a circulation back in August of two thousand twenty. The project was listed as an, or classified as an unlisted action. It was circulated to all the agencies. A new village consultant comes in, reclassifies the project as a type one action, fine, but then mandates that it get recirculated again. However, there's no difference, that you didn't have to go through that recirculation process. So that, again, added more time and delay. After the positive declaration was issued in February of two thousand twenty-one, the next SECRE step is a scoping document. The applicant prepares a scoping document, which is essentially a table of contents of what is to be studied in the DEIS. That was submitted by the applicant. It's then supposed to be reviewed by the municipality, deemed complete and finalized, and everyone's on their way. SECRE tells us, if that doesn't happen within sixty days, the draft scoping document becomes the final scoping document by operational law. However, the planning board had some delay here and it took them a hundred and seventeen days to issue that draft scoping document as final. The applicant gave two extensions of that sixty-day timeframe, you know, in good faith. Even those two sixty-days extensions were blown. One of the other major causes of delay was a approximately seven-month delay because we had to take a trip to the zoning board of appeals. Ten months, ten months after submitting our application, we got a determination uh, that the project was a shopping center and therefore needed area variances. The applicant disagreed with that determination and appealed it to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, seven months later, the ZBA overturned that determination, and then we were back to the planning board. So a step that wasn't needed cost us seven months. Um, and then lastly, to summarize, I know there are concerns that are stated in the moratorium, density, uh, stormwater, all the things that are listed in there. However, it's important to realize that this project has the DEIS, you've evaluated it, you've likely read it. Um, and I, what it says is it, it, it reviews every single environmental impact. And just to highlight a few, stormwater. We are now going to have stormwater implementation on this property. So DEC regs tell us that the stormwater has to be controlled. So now the stormwater on the project site will be controlled. There's no wetlands impacts, there's no wildlife impacts, there's no archaeological impacts. Transportation and traffic, there is an immense amount of proposed traffic improvements to this area in the village that will directly result from the project. And Kirk is going to run through a few of that. That problem exists today, from what I understand. It's not wholly because of the project. So the applicant is going to invest approximately two million dollars into renovating this traffic and this traffic mitigation to the benefit of the village. But if this project doesn't go through, the existing traffic problem likely isn't going to be cured. That's all I have as a recap. And thank you for your patience, I'm navigating a new paperless tablet here. Um, I'll hand it over to Kirk, he'll go through the site plan. If you have any questions, uh, we're here to answer them.
Just have a real quick question, if the board allows. So the DEIS, the draft DEIS has been submitted?
Yes, the draft DEIS was submitted in April of this year. We received all our comments from the village consultants. It was deemed incomplete. We got all of our comments, I believe, around the end of June, which was also past the forty-five days that SECRE provides for a municipality to give comments on the DEIS. Um, but nevertheless, we have the comments, we're revising the DEIS for a resubmission.
So no, so the DEIS has not yet been deemed complete? So no SECRE determination in terms of a negative declaration is being issued, right?
Well, so there has been a determination of significance.
Yeah, but there's not a negative declaration.
So we unfortunately did not receive a negative declaration, we received a positive declaration. So I think you might be thinking of a SECRE findings statement.
The findings which would lead to a neg debt, hopefully, showing that everything's remedied.
So, um, yes, just to clarify a few things. The way the SECRE process works is the determination of significance is a negative declaration or a positive declaration. You get the negative declaration, you're done, no more SECRE. If you get the positive declaration, then you go to the scoping session, then you go to the draft envi- environmental impact section, then you go to the final environmental impact section, and then you go to the findings statement. After the findings statement, you're done.
Well, after the findings statement, you are done with SECRE.
Correct, and then you can, and the underlying permits may be determined.
Correct. Was there a public hearing held for the scoping document?
I believe there was, or do you know, yes, and SECRE now mandates the, a public scoping session.
Okay, thank you, that was just the one question.
Thank you.
Am I going to block the camera here if I put a map up?
No, you're right, I think it's fine.
It's like an eyeline, the map makes it look a little bit thinner on the TV. Good evening, I'm Kurt Brocker, civil engineer for the project. I'm sure you folks are pretty well aware of this. I believe the village board is even an involved agency in our SECRE review. Uh, so I will keep it brief. I'm sure you're all familiar with the area, we have Gilbert Street Extension, YMCA, Joe Fixit's garage is right here on the corner on this property, Arch and Rockland Lake, Towne and Monroe Park, uh, the one-way slip pass under two oh eight. We're proposing a forty-seven thousand, five hundred square foot footprint building. There is a second story that's another twenty-five thousand square feet. The ground floor is proposed to be all retail use, the second floor is office use. Uh, the reason for the second floor being office use is it has a little bit lower parking threshold, and that's really all the parking we can fit on the property. Uh, we are pretty far along in the process with both engineering design, SECRE, and even traffic. I think Charlie, you know, went through the timeline pretty well, we don't need to beat that to death. Uh, and COVID obviously was another variable that came into the mix here. So we've done the DEIS, we've gotten the comments back, we are almost ready. John is the, the one that has the heavy lift of resubmitting the EIS. And we're about ready to resubmit that, I'd say in the next two weeks. And the hope would be that the board and their consultants are going to say, okay, you've addressed everything, it's complete, and then we circulate to all of the other agencies. I know a big issue in the village, probably the biggest, definitely the biggest issue with this project is traffic. I'll hit on some of the easier ones, water, we're using like eight thousand gallons a day, sewer's the same. Both utilities are available on Gilbert Street. I spoke to your, uh, the associates in the village at Handle, well, the Handle Water. I spoke to the county regarding sewer, they say there's no issue there. Uh, stormwater management, we actually have fantastic soil on this property. I heard through the grapevine that it might have been filled when they were building Route Seventeen, it was a long years ago. But so, we can almost infiltrate all of our stormwater runoff, so that's, uh, pretty easily handled. We'll obviously have landscaping, lighting, all those things. With regard to traffic, I'll show you this, so Ken Worsted from Creighton Manning is our traffic consultant.
Thank you.
So I know enough to be dangerous, but I'm not the expert. There's been lots of communication with, um, New York State DOT and the planning board has hired their own traffic consultant. And this is the latest scenario that DOT, Ken Worsted, our traffic consultant, and the village's planning board consultant have worked out. And really, to summarize it, the one-way slip pass here that's currently on two oh eight would become two-way traffic. And there would be two new traffic lights, uh, yeah, two new traffic lights installed, one at Gilbert Street Extension and one at the entrance to our site.
Isn't it current, this is real quick. Uh, so we have three devices here, is that one up at the top, which is in failure right now, that would be part of your plan?
Yes, I know. Um, so again, with regard to traffic, right now, they're, they're kind of looking at it from the thirty-thousand-foot level as far as what works. There's been many scenarios, there's traffic circle ideas that were run. Uh, land acquisition with regard to the gas station in the middle is obviously an issue. This is the scenario that the DOT, our consultant, and the village's consultant so far has identified will best get all of these intersections moving. I mean, are they going to be perfect and operating at a level of service A? Definitely not, but it will be an improvement over what's there now, let alone, uh, after we build our facility.
I believe, excuse me, I, I believe, uh, Creighton Manning's study would have included, uh, your impact on a model?
Yes.
Random model, right?
That's correct. So when they do a study like this, they do an analysis of existing conditions on it. Creighton Manning studies three hundred and fifty pages, I'm happy to provide it to you if you folks want to look through it.
I read it.
So they enter, they study several intersections that were actually identified by the planning board during the scoping process. And they, they, uh, studied three scenarios. Today, existing condition, future, no build. So for us, the future we chose was twenty twenty-four. Uh, you got to remember this was chosen back before COVID, so we maybe set back a little bit now. And then, future build, so twenty twenty-four if we didn't build our project, and then twenty twenty-four if we did build our project. And actually, here's the table that has all the intersections, they, and they do, uh, AM peak hour. So this is a weekday AM peak hour, weekday PM peak hour. That's usually all we do, but because this is a commercial, retail use, they also did Saturday. If it were residential, we wouldn't really do Saturday, in this instance, they did Saturday also. And they identify all the levels of service of all the various intersections, and they do a comparison. That's it, so, really, just to sum up the whole reason we're here, we're really far along in the process, and we're hoping we can continue.
Sure. Thank you so much.
So that's all we have, um, if- Board members have any questions, just please let us know.
Yeah, that'd be terrific, I'd appreciate that opportunity. Kurt, I had a question, uh, so we met back in two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah.
You remember?
I do.
Okay, and, um-
There weren't so many people here.
No, I know, uh, uh, the applicant, yourself, myself. And, uh, I was just curious, at that time, uh, we were discussing the possibility of bringing in the Y's traffic out to that device. You remember that?
Through our site?
Yes.
Uh, I do, yeah. So the second reason- We talked about it, it really, it was considered, but not too far. Um, for a couple of reasons, there's some terrain constraints here. Now, if you, if you go out there, I love this parking lot at the Y, it sits up, but it's ten feet high, and it's on solid rock, you can see the ledge.
Sure.
And then also, we're proposing an intercept, uh, traffic light here, Gilbert Street Extension. So this will now become a signalized intersection. With two-way movements coming out of it.
Right.
So it should operate at a much better level of service.
So that model was also showing the Y's, uh, impact? And, and then that model built showed the movement in and out with the device?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it shows the Y's current impact, at one point, the Y was proposing, uh, I think a swimming pool or something like that.
It's in.
And it's in, so we would have captured that existing traffic in our- They put counters out here to get existing build traffic.
Sure.
I don't remember the date that that was done, it's probably pre-COVID, so I don't remember why it's pool was built. But Adrian-
Last year.
Last year.
Yeah, I want to say it was like last spring.
So then their current traffic because of the pool probably wouldn't have been captured by our data collectors. But we were aware that the pool was coming and included that in our analysis. We included the Y, I don't have it written actually, but I'm going to say probably six or seven other projects in the immediate area.
Sure.
And we even went so far out as some of the bigger projects in the village's South Blue Grove.
Okay.
When, when was the most recent, um, time that, that they looked at the traffic? Just because in the past couple of years, it, I feel like it's a lot more, I travel it to work every day. So when was the most recent time that-
The most recent actual counts on the ground were done?
Yes.
I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but I'm going to say it was pre-COVID.
And Kurt, you just mentioned just now, you've considered, um, obviously Scudymunk at that device, but then there's another project up at the top.
Yeah.
And that-
Which really, really hasn't gone very far in the planning process, but to sneak under the radar and get caught up in our traffic analysis net, they made us the middle and we included it in our analysis.
Okay.
And there was another, uh, project just over, just off the map here, where the granite place used to be, right?
Sure.
We included that. Uh, then there was even another scenario where there's a, the, um, joint of life, what's the name of the road that comes-
Scudymunk?
Rico?
Rico, no.
Orange Rockland?
No, the road where all the, there were Home Depot, Walmart, and all that is-
Oh, oh, Locken?
Locken Tribe.
Locken, we did a scenario where, uh, there would be a new road, parallel to Route Seventeen.
Yes.
Overpass on Forest, all the way to here, to two, to two, to here.
Back up to two oh eight, yes.
So that was included in our analysis also.
Got it. Okay, thanks very much.
Mr. Gop. That's a couple of things. So, Mr. Gop, you've mentioned that this, if I heard you correctly, it's two million dollar traffic improvements? Is that, what does that cover and who's paying for that? And has the DOT, I know they haven't signed off yet, but you said they've been involved. So could you maybe enlighten the board on when, you know, what does that mean?
So the DOT has been involved since date one. Actually, the DOT even, um, I don't know if you remember, Mr. Gop, you've mentioned there was this whole thing at the start of the project of the board just declaring their intent to be lead agency. When we're doing, when we're dealing with all these other involved agencies, which here the DOT is a very big one, they're waiting to get that correspondence from the village, for them to kind of start their review. Because until they get that, we're just an applicant kind of swimming out there and never, never land. It's not until they get that communication that, hey, we have a project, hey, we want to be lead agency, that everybody gets on the same page. So we had been having meetings with them, and I drove up to Kipsey even with Ken, and we met, and your consultant Andrea was up there. And they, they asked us, what's the status of your lead agency circulation with the village? So as far as where we're at, I think that the DOT, the village's consultant and Ken have resolved that this plan, or something very close to it, is the best alternative we've got, given the circumstances. Given the current applications, given the current right-of-ways that we have to work with, uh, things like that. Now, whether two million dollars is going to pay for all of this, I don't think so. Where is the other money going to come from? That is a conversation that's going to have to be had with a lot of people. DOT, the village, the other applicants that are going to benefit from this. So how that gets worked out is yet to be determined. But, just so, I'm going to take that a step further. If we get a site plan approval from the planning board and, and we close SECRE, and it's all based on this plan, this plan's got to get built. And it'll be up to us and everybody else that's involved to figure out how to pay it, but we're, we're walking through this.
I just mentioned that because there have been issues in the past where, um, the DOT initially agreed that a particular would be okay, and that was to the tune of X dollars. And many people contributed to those X dollars, and it turned out then that when it came time to issue the permits, the DOT said, oh, well, actually, we need another million dollars. So meanwhile, the project was being built. So just be aware that this board has been in that situation and is very concerned.
The DOT would never do that.
Yeah, no, they're, like, so, uh, that's why I asked that question.
Okay. Al, so you're good?
I'm done.
Board? Okay, thank you, Chuck, uh, Kurt.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll, uh, go through this, and then we're going to reply to the, uh, scoping documents that you've submitted in the, in the, in the submittal, the initial submittal, and the comments tonight, and review all of that, and I'm going to come up with some questions, and we'll send them on to you, I think?
Yeah, that's fine, and then, um, and I only ask this because the moratorium, uh, law wasn't clear about the process. Um, so you guys are going to have written questions for us to respond to, and then we would look towards a decision?
I think the board is going to review everything they've heard, they want to look at the materials, they want to think through some of the issues, they may want to reach out to the planning board for their recommendation on this, uh, and then they will make a decision. If they need more information from you, they will certainly provide questions.
Okay, I, I only ask that, um, in these types of applications, time is really of the essence because the client is, uh, constantly investing money and, um, hoping to get this through. So if there's anything we can do to help expedite the process, please reach out and let us know if you need more information.
So they won't-
You are proceeding with SECRE. You are proceeding through SECRE, this moratorium doesn't stop that.
Right, so we are at our own risk, for now, going to continue with the SECRE process.
Yes, so your big concern really is that somehow the underlying zoning changes.
So there's, there's, well, there's a lot of concerns. One is, the way the moratorium is written, it only allows the planning board to continue with the SECRE process at the applicant's own risk. However, we have other permits that the planning board would like to review, or needs to review and needs to opine on. However, we have other permits that the planning board would like to review or needs to review and needs to opine on. The way the moratorium is written, the planning board can't even have discussions on those underlying permits. They can only have discussions on SECRE. So we want to make sure there's no more delay with the planning board and we can get this thing wrapped up. The other concern is, yes.
Can you just say what other the underlying permits?
So it would be a site plan and a special use permit?
I think it would just be separate.
Just site plan. So site plan is different than SECRE.
I understand, but site plan approval cannot be granted until SECRE is closed.
Correct, but it, the planning board can deliberate on site plan issues at the same time that it does SECRE, which is quite common. But the moratorium blocks the planning board from considering the site plan requirements.
I guess we can ask the planning board to opine on that.
Sure, and, and that's it. And yes, of course, the worry is that there is going to be rezoning at the end of this. And the applicant is at risk of losing an awful lot of its investment.
Understood, respect that.
I guess there's, there's two issues potentially at hand for us. One is zoning changes. And the other would be if we get through the SECRE process in a remarkably smooth fashion and we're at the finish line before you folks are done with your moratorium, then we're just in a holding pattern. We need to see what happens.
Understood. Understood.
I guess I would just say that. Well, no, no. Thank you.
You know, I think it's.
I understand what you're worried about. I do. And I'm sure the board does as well.
I mean, I think as far as the planning board reviewing the merits of the application from the site plan perspective, although legally may not, I think they're going to do it. It's all kind of bundled together with SECRE. So for me, Charlie, that's less of an issue because we could just zone change at a time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, next order of business, the event application is the Monroe Lions Club Fishing Derby, September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Resolved, the board of trustees approve the event application submitted by the Monroe Lions Club to host a fishing derby for kids eight through twelve on the south side of Crane Park on Saturday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, from eight AM to one PM. The application has been reviewed and approved by the building department, DPW, and police department. The Monroe Police Department will provide officers to assist as needed at no additional cost. Monroe Fire District and Monroe ambulance will be notified. I need a motion to accept the event as submitted by the Lions Club.
Barringer, will you make the motion?
Ferraro, second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
My right, so carry. Second order of business is the, uh, Lions Club is also asking that we waive the fifty-dollar event application fee due to the Monroe Lions Club being a nonprofit organization which helps our community. I need a motion to waive the fee.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Barringer, will you second?
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
My right, so carry. Thank you. Next order of business is a request. I don't have a water account number. Oh, excuse me, no, I'm sorry. Let me.
B and B.
Whereas B and B Cuchina, doing business as Laverre Cuchina located at forty-three Hillside Terrace, Monroe, has applied for the liquor license with the New York State Liquor Authority as required by law. Whereas the board of trustees of Village Monroe takes no exception to the approval of the liquor license and hereby waives its right to a thirty-day hold on the license application for the B and B Cuchina doing business as Laverre Cuchina. Now therefore be resolved, the board of trustees waive its right to require a thirty-day hold on the B and B Cuchina doing business as Laverre Cuchina license application. I need a motion to waive the thirty-day hold.
Ferraro will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
My right, so carry. Next application is the Santa at Rest Haven, December third, two thousand twenty-two. Resolved, the board of trustees approve an event application submitted by two thirty-six High Street LLC to meet Santa and Mrs. Claus at Rest Haven after landing by helicopter at Museum Village on Saturday, December third, two thousand twenty-two, from nine AM to five PM. The event route to transport Santa and Mrs. Claus in a horse-drawn carriage is as follows. Museum Village onto Route seventeen M to Gilbert Street, right onto Gilbert Street and left onto High. Approval is contingent upon receipt of approval by the New York State DOT thirty-three B permit allowing the event application, excuse me, Santa Claus procession around seventeen M. In the event that DOT approval is not obtained, the event application is approved without said procession upon seventeen M. The application has been reviewed and approved by the DPW, Building and Police Departments. Additional police services include six officers on three hours overtime to assist in the escort from Museum Village to Rest Haven. The total cost, additional police services, one thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars, of which two thirty-six High Street LLC is responsible for reimbursing twenty percent of those costs, which is two hundred and forty-six dollars. The building department approved the application with the following conditions: two fire extinguishers are required at each exit. Maximum occupant load is not to exceed ninety-nine persons within the building.
Mr. Mayor, can I have a correction for you on this?
Yeah.
First of all, how much you say the cost was?
One, two, three, three.
I'm sorry?
One thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars.
We're gonna pick up the entire building.
Okay.
As we usually do every year. Second of all, just for education, we pulled last year. We not only need in New York State Department of Transportation and the coordination of police department with the town of Bloomington Grove, I have to get the Bloomington Grove also permission on theirs based on your approval that they know we're doing it. Then they will coordinate with the police department, the fire department, and like they did last year, do the escort. However, the police department decides and determines the path would be. And once we get the approval, you had me, once we get the approval of the town of Bloomington Grove, we brought it back to you guys just so you knew what the approval process was. So that way, town of Bloomington Grove, Village of Monroe, and New York DOT were all involved in notice of what's going on, on the things. I just wanna make that correction. And then that'll be done. I'll take that. And then we'll also have to give you, what you asked about last year, if I wanna keep everything consistent, is I'm waiting on the letter from Paul Campanello from Museum Village. They've already approved the landing.
Okay. I'm just gonna clarify one thing and I'll have the clerk make note of this. The event route to transport Santa, it's the event route to escort.
And also, the, and I just forgot to copy that part, the labor is nonparticled.
We'll make that as a second motion. And then we'll send a letter out to the applicant notifying that they're gonna pick up the tab and that we're all agreed to that. And, okay, so I need a motion to accept the event as submitted with the correction to escort and the full reimbursement of one thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars by the applicant. I need a motion.
Barringer, will you make the motion?
Second?
O'Connor, will second.
Further discussion? Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
My right, so carry. Second order of business on this motion, on this applicant is the waiver of the fifty-dollar application fee to the applicant. I need a motion to waive the fee.
Barringer, will you make the motion that we waive the fee?
Ferraro, second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
My right, so carry. Thank you. Okay, next order of business is Village Hall, Pitney Bowes, mailing machine, trustee Farrar.
The current FP mailing machine has an expired lease. Proposals for an FP post-based Vision A seven with a sixty-three month lease would be two hundred and eleven dollars per month or a post-based Vision A with sixty-three month lease for two hundred and fifty-one dollars per month from Chris K. Kelly, which includes base auto feeder with sealer, fifteen-pound scale, rate guard, and unlimited resets. Vision three sixty professional, FP personal shipping, uh, one user maintenance and service labor for sixty-six months and parts and coverage for the first twelve months. Another proposal from Pitney Bowes for a SendPro C auto mailing machine off the New York State Procurement Services number two-two-nine-four-one-dash-E list includes delivery, installation, software updates, meter service agreements, all parts and labor, five-pound integrated scale, fifty accounting software standard, and two preventive maintenance annually for one hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-one, fifty-eight cents with a sixty-month lease. On a motion, resolved, the board of trustees approve the five-year lease for a SendPro C auto mailing machine off the New York State Procurement Services number two-two-nine-four-one-dash-E list through Pitney Bowes, three thousand one Summer Street, Stanford, Connecticut, at a rate of one hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents per month allocated from budget line A one-six-two-zero-dash-forty-five-eighty, BH equipment rental. I like to put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
O'Connor, will second.
Any further discussion? Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
My right, so carry. Next order of business, the water department received a letter from Mr. Aaron Taub, the owner of three-seven-three Route seventeen M requesting a reimbursement for penalties assessed on his May twenty-twenty-two water bills for the account numbers eighty-eight and three-eighty-eight in the amount of two hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. Mr. Taub explained that he went to make a payment on May thirtieth, but the site was blocked. On May thirty-first, he sent a payment request to his bank, but instructed them to deliver his check by six-six. Resolved, the board of trustees waive or deny the request made by Mr. Taub in the amount of two hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-two cents for penalties assessed on his May twenty-twenty-two water bill account eighty-eight and three-eighty-eight. The clerk can just give me a little background for a second.
So he tried to pay online on May thirtieth.
Yeah.
It wouldn't work.
For, for him or for us?
For him on there. He couldn't get it to go through. Whether or not it was an issue, I think, I believe he contacted Aileen and Aileen said, well, then get it in the mail today and have it postmarked by the thirty-first.
So she noted the call on the thirtieth?
Right.
Okay.
So the thirty-first, or have it postmarked by the thirty-first of May. If it's not postmarked the thirty-first of May, the first, um, two hits. Well, he called his bank and the bank's now sent out checks to pay your bill. And when he pressed the date to send by, he said, send by six-six, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay.
We received it.
Yeah.
He put a written, a written check and had it postmarked by the post office.
Sure.
He lives in Rockland. He didn't want to come. I told him to come.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I need a motion to, uh, the, well.
He, so Aileen told him to have it sent out before the thirty-first.
Right, put it in the mail, so it's postmarked, but it's.
So I'm gonna make the motion that we deny it.
Second?
Um, O'Connor, will second.
Further discussion? Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
My right, so carry. Thank you.
Was it first time?
I did.
Yes.
Okay, next order of business, building department refund request, trustee O'Connor.
Um, resolved, the board of trustees approves the refund request from Hudson Search LLC, twenty-one Robert Pitt Drive, Suite two-ten, Monsey, New York, one zero nine five two, in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars for a canceled title search, which has not been processed by the building department for the property, for the property located at ninety-five Franklin Avenue, two zero four dash one three dash three.
Put that in the form of a motion?
And I could put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
Ferraro, second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
My right, so carry. You'll take care of that? Okay, next order of business, PD inventory request to dispose, trustee Barringer.
He resolved, the board of trustees declares the following police department non-working equipment surplus and of no value and authorize its removal from inventory and disposal as junk. Dell Optiplex nine zero three zero, service tag six FJB four eight two, express code one four zero 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 one one eight zero five zero. Dell Optiplex nine zero three zero, service tag six FJC four eight two, express code one four zero 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 one six four seven zero six. Taser X two six P X one two zero zero six nine five K. Dell Power Edge twenty-nine hundred, serial number three YF DKK one slash Dell Edge R five twenty, replaced with new server equipment, and I like to put this in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
O'Connor, will second.
Further discussion? Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
My right, so carry. Next order of business, removal of the main floor clerk's office vault door, mega safe.
Resolved, the board of trustees authorizes mega safe, Mike Hookway, thirty Allen Street, Nekong, New Jersey, to remove and dispose the existing vault door from the main floor in the amount of three thousand dollars, including labor and material allocated from budget line A one-six-two-zero dot forty-five twenty Village Hall Maintenance. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
O'Connor, will second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
My right, so carry. Next order of business, clerk's.
Resolved, the board of trustee approves the purchase of a new mega safe HS series fifty-eight thirty for mega safe, Mike Hookway, thirty Allen Street, Nekong, New Jersey, in the amount of eight thousand five hundred dollars to be allocated from budget line A one-six-two-zero dot two-two-zero Village Hall office equipment for the clerk's office in Village Hall. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Barringer, will second?
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
My right, so carry. Next order of business, water billing software. Resolved, the board of trustees authorize mayor Dwyer to do an RFP, which is a request for proposals for water billing software to ensure the villages receives the highest quality service at a competitive cost. Uh, I need a motion to authorize the mayor to put out an RFP for the water billing.
O'Connor will make the motion.
I'll second it. Ferraro, second.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
My right, so carry. Thank you. Next order of business, uh, I'll just read something in a minute. Oh, okay.
Fire inspection.
Yep, nope.
I think something there.
Yeah.
I think it's. Just for discussion.
Yeah, so, um, the, uh, I guess there's a new fire inspection person and.
We hired a new fire inspector, but we, what we've been doing, the billing.
Right.
We just want the language changed in the collection part, so we just do the billing once. They have thirty days to pay it. If it's not paid, then it's just put on tax. And we just need to fix a little bit of the language.
So what I suggested, because I think the bills are going out in, like, momentarily, right? They go out.
Well, we've done, we've been billing for quite some time, but we have to keep billing. People are not paying. We have to rebuild. It's, it's time.
There's a simple change to the taxes section of your code that would allow for this. Um, I was concerned about, um, you know, due process, but I think it might work well to, because already you have language that allows fees to be assessed.
Like, it's, yeah, reassessed to the taxes, right.
So I, I think the way to do this is to, um, have a list done every year before you actually levy the fines or the unfeared fees onto the taxes. If you publish a list and that list is made public, like on your website, et cetera, and people are told if they don't take care of these delinquent fees and fines by April first, I think is the date. Is that correct, Ben? Then they will be levied. And so I, I think that's a way to provide people an opportunity to be heard. So either they pay by, either they take care of it by April first or they seek an audience with the village board to say why they shouldn't have to pay these. Then I think that that would, would work. So I have drafted a revision to that local law. I just did that a couple of days ago. I can send that around to the board. Basically, I've added provisions to one eighty dash twenty-one that I've added two provisions. One that says any fee due by a property owner or incurred by the property owner is due to the authorized person. In connection with any inspection or service rendered by the village, building department, including fire inspections and electrical inspections and really anything else that you guys do, you just let me know, shall be added, you know, if not paid by a certain date will be added. And then that annually, the board would cause a statement to, to be. And then that annually, the board would cause a statement to be prepared that would set forth anything that might be levied on the tax bill. So you have one statement, you have a list, it lists the property owner, it lists the property by SBL. It says, here's what hasn't been paid, and here's a service it hasn't paid for. That gets published on the website, big banner, check this list. And if you have a problem with it, call the village clerk, make arrangements to come and address the board. I think that takes care of the due process.
Okay, that's a due process. My concern is, so, uh, and this is based on a fiscal year.
It's based on your tax year, so you.
Well, it's, it's June one.
Yeah, so, so it would be your fiscal year where it would be based.
So somebody violates, somebody's got an inspection on June second, new year. By July second, which is thirty days or whatever, uh, they have not paid what they owe. If I understand correctly, the building department wants to be able to say to them, if this isn't paid by such-and-such a date, which is thirty days, did I, yeah. So if it's thirty days, then, uh, we're going to take this amount and we're going to immediately re-leve it onto your tax bill. What you're suggesting is that they be kept kind of in the queue until May or until April one, so March.
They are.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, and they actually be on hold until the end of the year anyway.
No, I got that, so, so I'm understanding completely? Okay, now, uh, how will we convey that? That'll be in the letter that would come from?
Well, we, and our, in that invoice would be the language that if this is not paid within thirty days, it should be levied on your tax.
Yeah, I mean, I've already, yeah, I've suggested that, if you don't already do that, to add that.
Yeah.
Right.
So that they're, they're, you know, they're given, they've been plenty of fair warning. The only thing is, there may be a couple of months where, you know, it goes, kind of goes into the next year because of just the way it's built.
It will happen here.
But, but that's okay, because it, it'll still get levied. So if the board wishes, I will go ahead and put this in the form of a local law amendment and send that out to the board. And you can take a look at it, uh, building department can take a look at it. And really, this, this, this is to your taxes, that chapter, chapter one-eighty. I think it would be a good idea to review that whole chapter and see if there's anything else we need to add in here. Because the way I view this is this is an annual list that gets published on your website for anything that's owed to the village that hasn't been paid. So if you are going to, um, even though other sections of your code, like property maintenance, building code, that should all be on this, this, this sort of overarching list.
Okay. And it would be listed as SBLs?
I, I would say the address and the SBL.
Yeah, okay. All right, good, so, uh.
So do you want me to do that?
Yeah. Yes? Jen? Yeah. And then I'll wrap this right up. And I, and I, I think you're correct about chapter one-eighty and, and bringing everything else into the same family.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of chapter one-eighty is standard that everybody has, but.
Okay. All right, very good, uh, so, council will do that, and then we'll, we'll pick it up on September sixth? Is there something we need to do on that end?
Uh, you have to introduce it, and then you have to get the public hearing.
All right, so clerk will take care of that, we'll introduce for September sixth? Okay. Okay, great. Next order of business, uh, trustee O'Connor, uh, building department again.
The building department has done an inspection of the property of Thirteen Lakes Road, two-one-two-dash-two-dash-two, with a DBA of Thirteen Lakes Road LLC. Thirteen Lakes Road LLC has failed to achieve the necessary and required repairs to the building and premises to make it safe and has failed to fully implement any of the corrective measures to remove the unlawful situation in accordance with a violation notice dated July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. Since the property still remains in a state of continuing severe disrepair and lack of maintenance, the next step in accordance to the requirements set forth by the village of Monroe, code section two-hundred-dash-sixty-seven B-two-B, which includes the following. B, in the event of, in the event the owner, agent, or person in control of such building or structure does not comply with the repairs or improvements or removal as requested by the building inspector in accordance with the subsection B-two-A above, the building inspector shall prepare and submit a written report to the board of trustees which demonstrates why the subject building or structure is deemed an unself-built in accordance with SOS two-hundred-dash-sixty-seven E-one. Therefore, in accordance with the village Monroe code section two-hundred-sixty-seven B-two-C, the village Monroe, the Monroe Village Board of Trustees, shall be given the responsibility to consider this matter and may decide by resolution, quote-unquote, to direct the owner or other persons to complete the work within the time specified in the order or such other time as shall be determined by the board of trustees.
Okay, so, uh, I spoke with the building inspector and he's circulated some information, I believe we all have it, yes, counsel? So I, I think at this time, what you want to do is, uh.
I, I think the board, um, would, would by resolution determine when this property needs to come into compliance. And I would look to the building inspector, what, what day, I mean, he's passed all the dates he's been.
Passed all the dates.
And by the way, he just sent an email, I don't know.
Yeah, he did. He did just send an email, but it's the same rhetoric.
So, um, certainly not in time for this board, for the building inspector to opine on that email. So, uh, my suggestion is that under the code, um, you can, uh, direct them by resolution, direct the owner to, here's your drop-dead date, and if it's not done by that date, then you authorize the building inspector to make the property safe. Now, I think the building inspector can then suggest to you what that means, and then that's done. Okay?
So, thirty-first of August?
Yeah, I would put him on a short lease, yes.
And so to, to make it safe, he would need to board it up, remove it.
He would need to remove that whole front porch assembly and board up the house. Power and everything has been cut for probably two years now, or every time.
So the resolution would be to direct, that the village board of trustees directs the owner of this property to remove the unsafe front porch, board up the house, so that it is, um, safe. And to do that by August thirty-first, or, uh, the village board shall cau- shall direct the building inspector to cause that work to be done and assess the cost against the property.
Okay.
So that's the basic form of the resolution. And Kim, certainly, I can, you know, you've got that down, and then I'll just make sure that it's kind of what I said. And that's the motion, that's the resolution.
Okay, so, uh, we'll act upon that right now. All right, I need a motion to, uh, provide the opportunity to the building department to resolve this matter by resolution, written by the clerk, right?
Basically, remove, by August thirty-first.
Right.
The property owner must remove the unsafe porch.
Yep.
And secure the remainder of the building from entry. And that's it, by August thirty-first. If that is not done to the building inspector's satisfaction, the board directs the building inspector to cause that work to be done.
Yeah, there's a, there's a hole in the roof also. Says a major hole in the roof. Cause I couldn't add it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll add that.
Yeah, yeah. There's a, a hole in the rear right corner of the roof.
Allowing rain to go into the house, so that's.
Maybe animals.
Yeah. All right, so, yeah, that's the motion, and, uh.
I need somebody to make that first?
Directive is gonna come from the village board sent to, you know, to the, to the.
The rec- copy of the resolution will be sent to the.
Correct, that's what I mean, okay.
Right, with your violation.
Which he already has.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's already been done, so it's true.
Oh, it's just the form, it's just, just.
Yeah, we'll give it to him again, so it's a list.
Okay, I need it first?
Barringer will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Any further discussion, call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrar, aye. O'Connor, aye.
Farrar, aye, so carried, next order of business, Justice Court Independent Audit, trustee, uh, Farrar.
Whereas, in accordance with section two-zero-one-nine-dash-A of the Uniform Justice Court Act requiring the village justices annually provide their court records and dockets to the respective village auditing boards, and that such records be examined or audited, and that, and that fact be entered into minutes of the board's proceedings, it is hereby resolved, the board of trustees hereby acknowledge that an audit of the village justice court's cash receipts, cash dispersments, and cash balances was made for a year ending May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, by the village independent auditor RBT CPA's LLP, eleven Racket Road, Newburgh, New York, one-two-five-five-zero, and no discrepancies were found. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrar, aye. O'Connor, aye.
Okay, um, I, uh, I'm gonna allow trustee Barringer to talk up the, uh, upcoming events. You know about a lot of the stuff that's going on, right?
I do. Uh, well, first I want to say, uh, the carnival was really amazing, and I think that we all did a pretty good job together with the bracelets and the tickets and, you know, the help that we had. It was, it was really well attended. Um, okay, what do we have coming up? We have, I know the, the young, the young. Yeah, but.
Community barbecue is this Saturday?
That's Saturday.
Community barbecue is Saturday. I don't know they.
Four to eight.
From four to eight.
Yep.
Um, I know we have the fire, isn't John working with the food?
Yes. My Bayou Fire Company will be there with all the barbecue.
Okay, so that's.
Girl Scouts.
The Girl Scouts will be there, um.
YMCA.
Okay, so you, you can do the, that's, which is fine. So that, we have a lot of things coming up, August twentieth. I know with the police, we have the young, the young, what do I want to call it? No, but also.
Oh, youth academy.
The youth academy.
Yes.
That is starting.
Starting Monday, uh, graduation, yeah, Friday.
And that was SRO, right? I mean, at, the standing room only, right?
Uh, yeah, we actually had an unfortunate turn a couple away. We had to move up, uh, twenty, it was, this week was the deadline, we were at capacity. So, uh, fifteen kids, ages seven to eleven, uh, it's gonna be good. We've got a lot.
Is it, it's not here, is it here every day?
It's at, starting at the police department.
Where do we start from here?
Yeah, starting at the police department, and then do the initial, there, that, if the parents know what's just gonna go on, and then instead of the plan, Monday, I believe, we start with a, uh, mock criminal trial with the judges.
Very cool. Very cool.
Well, and then we're back, well, we'll be at our meeting before our cheese festival and our nine-eleven. Um, I just want to encourage everyone to just continue to support all of our local businesses. Um, I know Sam, Amandola's, I know, um, they retired, but, um, I work up in Pine Bush, and Louis came from Pine Bush. He told me like ten years ago, he was buying Amandola's if, if they ever moved. So I was pretty excited to see him there and kind of surprised that he left to come here, you know, that was kind of exciting. Um, so I got all, all I got, I guess.
Good. Farrar, anything?
Nothing.
Okay, very good, thank you. Uh, council, anything on your end?
No.
Okay, uh, public comment, anyone from the public wish to speak?
Will it come up the podium or from here?
No, you could. Much would be noticed.
The waivers, does that open the public hearings when you make a decision on those? Because I think, first of all, the, the, the attorney was disingenuous with this, with this board by first telling you about the delays of three and a half years. Reality is, we've been under COVID, so obviously, no, nobody could do anything. Um, a lot of you know, I've been dealing with Rest Haven for six years. We spent twice the amount of money. It wasn't because of this, because of this board and the community support, we were able to move it forward. But I could hear a lot of things that were disingenuous about it. And, I mean, I can see the seeker and stuff, but I don't know if anybody realizes that with the New York State, uh, Department of DEC, is, a lot of Monroe is considered, um, Class B, which is an endangerment of the bat life and the life in the area. Cause I've checked on it because of Pine Crest, we got twenty-five acres there now. We can't do really anything to the property because the bat life. The more you, the more you do it, you know, and then you hear, you see the pictures of the bears out, the deers out. I got them hiding at Rest Haven now, they think they pay, they don't even pay rent, those damn things. But you, you gotta think of that, there were a lot of things that I just heard that I think that this board, and if you don't mind if I take the moment to go through some of the things I thought I heard, when you, so you can consider it down the road, um, let me just see my list here. He mentioned a real estate agent letter. I'd be interested in knowing who the real estate agent is, because there are several agents in this area that tend to maneuver numbers to their own satisfaction. I don't know if you've ever heard of the thing called the whisper listing in real estate? That's where it is a private listing between real estate agents that never make it to the MLS. This is why when you hear property has sold unbeknown to anybody, it's because it's through a whispering list. One agent whispers it to the other agent. So the community doesn't get an access to it. It's, it's, it's a particular list of people who get special treatment. So the numbers you get, you gotta be careful. I know there's a property for seven acres up on Mon- in Monroe for sale again, for, I think, the second time in a year. They put out a publication about senior housing. They made reference, and, and this is, and this, I know Jim didn't say this. They made reference, they talked to Jim, and they could put a hundred and forty units there. I know Jim didn't say that, because Jim's pretty well versed with what's used is of that land. But this being published, it's being published, numbers, full, numbers are being put out there. So when you're hearing these numbers, and they say, oh, it put fifteen million dollars, oh, it's gonna be worth twenty-seven million, it's only worth seven-thousand, hundred thousand. Pine Crest, not Pine Crest, Clear Drive in Monroe is fifty-six acres that sits on the back of Gilbert. We made a bid for twelve million dollars for that property. Jacob and Gubitz told them to take the other bid from the Acidix for nine million dollars for fifty-six acres. And I was part of that whole process, think about it. They're throwing numbers out there like it's nothing. That's the, a lot of times why when residents get mad, that they think something's happening here in the community, it's because it's the whisper list. If I go and buy a piece of property, like I did Pine Crest, and I've got twenty-five acres, and they paid, uh, what'd they pay? For the hundred-something acres over on two-oh-eight there where they're developing now with the old golf course, they paid like eighteen million or something like that, whatever it was. I asked my, when we went to buy Pine Crest, I asked them to evaluate that for me, use that in my numbers. Appraiser says they can't. I said, why not? He said, because it was not in the MLS. So when we talk about depriving the community, people come in here and sit here and give you numbers, you better beware of those numbers. Don't be in awe of those numbers, cause, because anybody can say anything on a paper. If they spent five million dollars, say, hand, hand me your paper and show me. I want to go for the tax credits I can get on Rest Haven, I have to give this federal government a list of everything I paid. Why shouldn't this board look at the same thing? Um, I tell you, forty-seven thousand square feet's a pretty big building to people who are in that area. I think that's gonna get a major opposition to it. Traffic issues, has the traffic issues been resolved? They still got time to do that, why do they need to be lifted? They don't need out on this, they got all this time to do the traffic. They can do their seeker, even if you approved it to the extent of them doing the seeker with the planning board, restricting it to that. That takes a while to do. Um, they talk about loss of funds, they talk about a ZBA appearance, you know, they said no environment impact, versus what it is, then it isn't, which one is it? Your board doesn't know, I, I think that, you know, um, they said no wild impact. Well, we know the entire community has a wild impact here, we know that. I've got bears on Pine Crest, I've got. I've got bears on Pine Crest, I've got foxes and all sorts of creatures there. And that's fine. They're welcome to stay. Um, you know, that, you know, this, they said they've been waiting for this thing for two years again, the COVID delay. The big issue, um, they talk about the traffic. All right, we're going to give you two million dollars, but what if it costs four million? Oh, there's other projects over there I could pay for. Well, you know what Orange and Rockland did? I put a gas line go, I started a gas line going up Lake Region Boulevard. My daughter's a third house up. They made me pay for it to go up to where I had it. If anybody tapped into it or used the service, there was a reimbursement period within like five years or three years. It would be reversed back, but the main person who got there first paid everything. What if that doesn't happen? That's, you know, one has nothing to do with the other. And if I believe, isn't that town up there too, up on that hill there? Up on the hill, across from the gas station, that, the way they want to do it, isn't that town property up there? There's a town property behind the firehouse. There's a town property up there. That's owned by DJ Brent Realty or Management and they've got the property here in the village too and they're trying to tap it all in together. I mean, everybody knows what's going on out there.
Well, I thought you were talking about this project too.
Oh, well, in conjunction, I'm saying, is that, you know, one project is there today. They should be paying everything. And you could say to them, listen, you want this, it's what you got to do. I mean, one of the big issues, I know it's been on your screen and radar for years, you know, we used to talk about it back when you were village. Trustee, what about the water? Is your water capacity down? Are you below seventy-five percent, eighty percent capacity? I highly doubt it. I doubt you did it in the last six months, twelve months. I know you've been working on it. But all these things you got to think about. And that's what I think part of your comprehensive review rate now is, all these issues. And then people, the rumors out there, and I don't know if it's true or not, but I'm sure you heard it more than I that the four hundred and thirty units that are going in that Tony Cardone wants over there, they're screaming up and down, they're going to tap into your water. I don't know, but I'm just saying, but that's got to be resolved from a public point of view. Everybody wants to know what's going on, because you keep giving out water. My property doesn't matter. We're, we're, we, we clean, we have seven wells, we clean two, and I've got, I've got almost forty gallons of water a minute over there. When I get the other five down, they think I'm going to be near a hundred gallons of water for that property. I'm having infrastructure done. I'm doing it the right way, the way you're trying to do it here. And these people have to understand, we're having new electrical lines, we're having new gas lines, we're having new cable, they're putting, uh, fiber optics in there. We're having, uh, sewer put in. You, you, all these things have to be thought about beforehand. And these people just want to do these things without forgetting about the water, which is the biggest conserve, issue here in this community. Uh, they mentioned something about a traffic permit, a special use permit, or maybe I just misunderstood that. Is that correct? Jim? I thought he said that. Okay, I might have misunderstood, that's why I'm clearing the air about it. But, you know, when you do these things, you know, it's very important to the community, like, things I do and stuff, I won't exceed what I can do based on the community uses and stuff. But, you know, I think that, you know, I think they should be able to do what they are entitled to do with their property. I'm not arguing that at all. But I think if you need time and they want to do a seeker, let them do the seeker. Restrict it to the seeker. That's not going to stop them from moving their project, but if they don't even know the traffic, what good's the seeker if you never accept the traffic pattern? It's putting the cart before the horse. You know, it's, it's like I used to do, throw a vent and then come and ask for permits. No, no, no. We just have this week, not this weekend, August twenty-seventh, it's a private party. Private invitation only and we invite the board to come and see Rest Haven. We've got our annual end of summer party, private invitations and stuff. This year, this, last year, we had a young lady come who was named Eileen Brown. It's ironic, Pam's maiden name was Brown too. That's the irony of it. She was the daughter of May McGowan, who was the first resident in the house in June nineteen twenty-three. She was an aide in the house as a guide with her sister, uh, Mary Teresa, who since passed in the fifties. This, that weekend coming to the house will be, Mary Teresa and Eileen Brown's children are coming back to see the house for the first time in over fifty years. So you're all welcome to come, you know, it's free of charge. I promise no tax on anything, on anything. We're, we're not-for-profit over there. But a- again, I, I just concerned that when you start taking these special treatments, and I'm not saying he shouldn't be able to move his project ahead. I know he's been working on it, but to say I've been working on it three and, three point nine month, three years and nine months is disingenuous. Because we, no one could do anything. I couldn't do anything. I couldn't even get my license, try and get the license up in, up in Albany. So I, and I respect that, but I just think the community needs it to be fixed first before any, infra-, you need infrastructure before you get anything else. And we know Jim's busy enough anyway. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Good? Okay. Okay, I need a motion to, uh, go into executive session for the purposes of attorney, client, personnel, actually.
Berenger will make the motion.
Farrar will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
O'Connor, aye.